We had to make sure we had places on the right spot on the agenda on a certain item. So we've got it figured out now. I'll call the meeting to orders. Please stand for the pledge allegiance. Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will move on to the business manager will issue the oath of office to board member, board member Baker and board member Ryder.
Nan Baker, at a regular meeting, the school board held on Monday, March 14th, 2022, the scoreboard, the school board declared you are a duly elected member of the school board of Sioux Falls School District 49-5. South Dakota law provides that newly elected members of the school board shall qualify and assume their office at the annual meeting of the school board in July by taking and subscribing to an oath or affirmation to support the laws and constitution of the United States and the state of South Dakota and to faithfully perform the duties of school board membership. At this time, as business manager, it is my pleasant duty to administer this oath. Would you please raise your right hand and read the oath?
I, Nan Baker, having been elected to the office of member of the school board of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, 49-5, of Minnehaha County and Lincoln County, South Dakota, do solemnly swear that I will support the laws and the constitution of the United States and the state of South Dakota, and that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of the school board membership.
Would you please subscribe to the oath? And then I'll sign it, too. We'll get a original in the business office and we'll get a copy to you. Thank you. Carly Ryder, at a regular meeting, the school board held on Tuesday, March 14th, 2022, the board declared you were a duly elected member of the school board of Sioux Falls School District 49-5. South Dakota law provides that newly elected members of the school board shall qualify and assume their office at the annual meeting of the board in July by taking and subscribing to an oath or affirmation to support the laws and constitution of the United States and the state of South Dakota and to faithfully perform the duties of school board membership. Again, at this time, as business manager, it's my pleasant duty to administer this oath. Would you please raise your right hand and read the oath?
I, Carly Ryder, having been elected to the oath, the office of member of the school board of Sioux Falls School District 49-5, of Minnehaha County and Lincoln County, South Dakota, do solemnly swear that I will support the laws and constitution of the United States and the state of South Dakota, and that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of school board membership.
Would you please? I'll sign this and we'll get you a copy of the original. Thank you.
Thank you. Congrats. Move on to items four A and B, approval of June payroll and claims to vendors who have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Have motion second. I'll let Heather choose who's first and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those are approved. Onto supplemental consent agenda, item five A and B, both are to Samford Health. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those are approved with one extension from board member Ryder. We'll move on to now the organization of the school board. And at this time, the business manager will assume the chair to do that. I just, yeah, go ahead. You can do that.
Okay, we're now taking nominations for the president of the school board.
I would like to nominate Kate Sharon Betts for president. I just want to thank the Sioux Falls School District community, especially the Board of Education, for allowing me to serve in this position for the last three years. During that time, we have all dealt with boundaries, recruiting a new superintendent, COVID virtual learning, reopening school and supporting students who suffered significant learning loss. With all of your support and work, we would not be in the position we are in today. We all served because we care about the children in the community falls. It should be, this is a quote from John Adams, "It should be your care therefore in mind to elevate the minds of our children and exalt their courage, to accelerate and animate their industry and activity, to excite them in habitable contempt of meanness, abhorrence of injustice and humanity, and an ambition to excel in every capacity, faculty and virtue. If we suffer their minds to grovel and creep in infancy, they will grovel all their lives." I continue to serve as a deputy Kated Board Member to the Sioux Falls School District.
Thank you. Okay. Any other nominations? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Congratulations.
I would just like to take this time to thank Cynthia for the last three years of her leadership and hope I can serve even tiniest bit to how you have in the last three years. So thank you for your service and enjoy your semi-retirement.
It'd be nice to be still busy, still busy, but not the other meetings.
All right. And I thank everybody for support. Thank you. So then I'll move on to the election of the, right?
Vice, yep.
Yes, of the vice president of school board. Can I get any nominations, please?
Oh, nominee. Carly.
I second Carly Ryder.
All right. Any other nominations? All right, seeing none, vote to approve the election of Carly Ryder for vice president of school board. All in agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? All right, congratulations, Carly.
Thank you.
Yes.
May I take a moment of privilege?
Yes.
I also want to thank Cynthia for her willingness to serve as board president two of the three years with me coming in as a leader with COVID and all of the things that I got to enjoy with new buildings and the boundaries being done before I got here. Thank you very much. But truly, it was a joy to serve with you as somebody coming new to the district. And I'm grateful for the leadership that you provided as well as the leadership of this school board. And I think public service is getting more difficult everywhere and we see school districts across the country that are suffering because of the inability for board members to serve as a body that puts the best interest of children in schools first, and you have all done that admirably. And so I thank all of you as well as recognizing Cynthia for your service.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to item six C, authorization of membership to the associated school boards of South Dakota. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
Second.
All right, all those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, that motion passes. Sorry, I'm a little rusty, so bear with me. All right, may I get approval of minutes of meeting held on June 27th, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion passes. All right, we have three people wishing to address the school board on non-agenda topic items. We'll start with the first one, Sarah Sporer, but I'm going to read something first. All right, the board sets aside a portion of each meeting agenda to hear from community members on items of general interest or concern as well as regular agenda items. Comments are limited to five minutes unless more than three people have signed up, then the group is limited to 15 minutes total. And we'll let you know when you have one minute remaining so you can wrap up your comments. If there are multiple people attending to speak on one topic, we would encourage you to coordinate your comments. When you are called to the podium, please identify yourself and your address and the organization you represent for the record of the meeting. If you have any visual aids or handouts, please see a member of our communications team prior to the meeting. They will help you distribute information and approve any item to be shown for public viewing. The board does not take comments during this time on any personnel matters, and all meeting attendees are expected to treat others with respect and civility. The board will not respond to individual comments and staff may be requested to follow up as needed following the meeting. Thank you for coming tonight and, as I said, we'll welcome Sarah Sporer as our first guest to the podium.
And I'll time you, too, since you're new to this. So when I'll show you, when you have, you get five minutes, I'll show you when you have one minute and then 30 seconds if you're, and then hopefully alarm will go off when they're done, too. Thank you.
Sure, that's fine. Just remember to state your name and your address. Yep.
Okay, I'm Amy Brunner and I'm at 3420 South Alpine Avenue. And I have a student who attends Ben Rifle Middle School. And as I think the board makeup was the same in February, March of 2021, when you guys probably all received phone calls and emails with regard to the crossing at Highway 11. Just a short recap on that. We found out by way of the mapping tool on the website in February, I think of that year, that the two-mile radius around the school that was deemed the walk zone would include students who were on the west side of Highway 11, leaving somewhere in the range of 70 to 100 families with their children to walk across Highway 11 to get to school. Mind you, it's a 55 mile an hour highway with multiple lanes of traffic. So at that time, I think that you had heard from quite a few families on that. I had the opportunity to speak through my career with a number of civil engineers who all kind of shook their heads and thought that that wasn't really a very safe situation for our students because that highway wasn't designed, it was designed for fast traffic and not pedestrians generally. One of them said that it was like trying to fit a square peg into a round hole. I personally have seen people run that stoplight quite a few times at high speed and I've tried to ride my bike across there and it's a rather daunting situation. So in March of 2021, I was very grateful because the school board and the school district heard our, heard our comments and presented a solution that I think was agreeable to the families in the district. You guys had provided a shuttle bus that would come to Harmanon Park and our kids in the walk zone would just ride their bikes or walk or whatever, get to the, get to the shuttle bus, it would take them to school, drop them off, and then after school, it would pick them up to school and drop them off again at Harmanon Park. That was a great solution, worked well for our family and I think a lot of other families. Ridership on that bus, to my understanding, was very good, so there was clearly a need. In January of, sorry, I'm going to lose my notes here. In January of this year, we were contacted by the school district and told that the, there would be buses provided for the students through the neighborhoods, which worked out just fine as well. Either solution was good. The reason I'm here today is because I've been on the website and plugged in my address and it says that we're ineligible at this time for transportation. As a result of that, I did speak with some folks at Ben Rifle. And what we're being told is that the, the new mapping tool will be out sometime later this summer and then we'll have an indicator of what's happening at that point. I've also spoken with people on the PATH committee with regard to the study and I don't know if there's any study results that have come out about the speed and the reduction of speed. So we don't really have any full long-term answers as far as this goes. And so I don't know if our children are going to have wheeled transportation across Highway 11 at this time or not. And if we don't find out until August, which is going to be shortly before the school year starts, that puts families, especially like mine, working parents in a bad situation because then I got to figure out how to get my kids, my daughter, to school. I don't want her walking across Highway 11. It's not a safe passage for her. So I guess I'm here at this time just to ask that you continue to provide wheeled transportation to our students across the highway and to let our families know what we're dealing with as soon as possible because plans need to be made accordingly. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for your input. Sarah, did you still want to speak?
So I'm Sarah Sporer and I'm at 3419 South Harmony Drive in Sioux Falls. So just, just a short way from Harmanon Park there. We also have two children, actually, one that will be an eighth grader this year and one that will be a seventh grader this year that will go to Ben Rifle Middle School and be returning there. Just as Amy spoke, I just want to reiterate and thank you for listening to us parents and providing that wheel transportation and that bus service for our children to cross that highway. And it's just very important, I work with a surgical trauma team at Avera and those accidents that you see is hard to even bear for these children. So I just want to reiterate and appreciate that you guys have allowed us to have that transportation and we hope that you continue or find some long-term solution for our kids for that highway because obviously that's not going away or it's just getting bigger and bigger and bigger. And so whether it be having our kids ride their bike or walk to Harmanon Park or walking to that next bus area, wherever that pickup could be for them, would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and next up, Chad Bishop.
Good evening. My name is Chad Bishop and I live at 7405 South Valencia Drive here in Sioux Falls. I realize that over the last several months or maybe a number of things that I have said that have seemed odd or out of place. For instance, last October, when asking you to help our children discern propaganda, I specifically identified Ibram X. Kendi's work, Anti-Racist Baby, which was read to my elementary school-aged daughter in the district. I addressed propaganda bio omission at that meeting by mentioning George Orwell's 1984 and the memory hole. At that time, I said Oxford defines Orwell's concept of the memory hole as an imaginary place where inconvenient or unpleasant information is put and quickly forgotten. So the events of the last 72 hours online make this timely. During our last presidential election, one significant piece of information that may have been very damaging to one of the candidates was memory hold by the mainstream media and social media. The propaganda put forth was that of information was clearly Russian disinformation and 50 different members of the intelligence community signed a letter to this effect. Did you know that emails handled by large providers are tracked? Cryptography is used to fingerprint emails using math and computer science in such a way that they can be proven to be legitimate at a later date. That information is inserted into the header of the email. You don't really see it. It's not like visible to you, but it's there. This is called domain keys identified email. One particular capable technical expert was approached by a journalist with the full email data, including headers. This expert documented the methods he used to cryptographically verify in a way that cannot be spoofed with known technology prior to the election. Quantum computing might change that, but it hasn't yet. He did it in a public, in a public and in such a way as any curious journalist could have replicated this. I did it and verified prior to the election. The thing that was significant then was 10% for the big guy. In addition to teaching them about propaganda, please teach our children about censorship and the memory hole. Now, I'm sure at the time that seemed like an odd thing to bring up. But consider the reporting by none other than the Washington Post this March in an article titled, Here's How the Post Analyzed Hunter Biden's Laptop. Attempts, quote, "Attempts to verify the emails relied mainly on a technology called DKIM, which stands for Domain Keys Identified Mail." DKIM is a cryptographic technology used by Google and some other email services to verify the identities of senders. Now remember, 50 members of the intelligence community all told us and assured us this was Russian propaganda. Now it seems at least, it seems like it is at least in part verified by the Washington Post using cryptography, five months after I mentioned it here, which is odd. I wonder if it took them five months to run the same scripts I did. I wonder if it took them five months to run the same scripts I did. So I once again ask you to help our children build the critical thinking skills to help identify and properly discount propaganda. It's unfortunate, so propaganda, that you had the opportunity to put some criteria around your membership to the Associated School Boards of South Dakota. Since it's their membership in the National School Boards Association, that we have asked you to reconsider and withhold your dues and use your vote to withdraw from that organization. The reason why was the letter that they sent to the federal government soliciting the use of force, some threat of force against parents like myself at school board meetings. Is that a minute? Okay. So it's now come forward, I mean, at the time, the propaganda in the news was that it was one person, it was a lone wolf, and that explanation was given here. We now know it was the entire leadership committee that read that email, provided no feedback, and that they sent that letter up to the federal executive. Since then, there's been a massive exodus from the board, leadership of the NSBA, there's been a change in leadership, and there's been 25 states withdraw. You had the opportunity tonight to make your voices heard, put a little pressure on the state organization, withdraw, hold your dues, and withdraw from that organization if they didn't comply. It's unfortunate, but think of how you got fooled by the propaganda. Now I understand, I listened to 50 intelligence officers back in October too. Oh, excuse me. Thank you for your time.
All right, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion passes, and we're on to the good news report. Deanne.
Good evening. We have friends here this evening from Patrick Henry Middle School who will come up and share a bit about their school in our featured school spotlight. And I have to give a huge shout out to Kim Sharping. The summer, for some reason, the summer slots that we had available for our school spotlight never got taken right away. So I, I reached out and said, hey, who wants to do this? It's either an hour later, and wouldn't you rather do it in the summer when things are just a hair slower? So I appreciate Kim and her two teachers for joining us today, and we'll go from here.
Thank you, Deanne, and truly the credit is to our two teachers, Ms. Erickson and Ms. Horky, because they're on summer break, and they agreed to come and do the presentation tonight. But I will say, thank you for having us, it's not every day that we get asked to come and talk about our school, so we appreciate the opportunity. All right, so a little bit about Patrick Henry. There is, we have a three admin team, myself, our assistant principal, Jeff Knoll, and then our dean of students, Ryan Hall. Our mission at Patrick Henry is exactly that of the Sioux Falls School District. It is to educate and prepare each student to succeed in a changing world. A little bit about us, we are the Panthers, we're the home of approximately 1,000 students right now, grades six through eight, so about 330 students per grade. Our staff consists of over 120 dedicated professionals. We are located in the heart of McKinnon Park, and we have served generations of families since 1956. And I think that that's one of the things that makes us pretty unique, is that we have served so many generations, and it's really been fun to see grandparents and then parents and now students coming through, and even our assistant principal, he and his wife went to school there, and their kids go to school there. Mr. Hall, our dean of students, went to school there, there's still teachers that were there when he was there, so there's just that long history that, that makes it really pretty unique and fun to be part of. Our core values at Patrick Henry that you will see throughout our building and classrooms are honor, to be courageous and try new things, to be equipped, and this is for students and staff, to be ready, so ready to teach and ready to learn, and then just invested, not only in our school but in our community. At Patrick Henry, our staff is highly committed to providing quality education and opportunities for all students. We also like to have a lot of fun, as you maybe can see just from the pictures. One, one thing that we do every year that we look forward to is our annual Panther Party, and we usually get staff that will sumo wrestle, or in this case, they were jousting, and for some reason, kids just love to see their stu, their teachers get, I don't know, beat in some sort of competition, I don't know. So a little bit about our students. We are recently the home of the middle school honors program, this past year was the first year of that, so we have 33% of our students are in gifted education, we have 13% on an IEP, almost 40, 39% that are on free and reduced lunch, and then 32% of our students are of ethnicity other than white. We did include our recent state assessment results, just because that's something else that we're, we're really proud of at Patrick, is we do have a long history of academic excellence and high achievement, and so again, this year, you can see how we did compared to our peers across the district, both in math and ELA, and then across the state. Another thing that we are really proud of is just our high student involvement in many different activities. We have a really strong band, chorus, orchestra program, a lot of student involvement in clubs and athletics, and so we just highlighted a few of those in the pictures there. And we know that research tells us that students that get involved in any extracurricular activity just have a higher rate of success and graduation completion. So we really do our best to promote that involvement in middle school. One of the things that we wanted to highlight tonight was something new, and so I've brought along, like I said, Ms. Erickson and Ms. Horky. They had the opportunity to pilot a new program this summer that we were pretty excited about and found that it was really successful. We invited 30 students to be part of our new summer Panther Academy, and we had asked teachers for recommendations. One of our school goals is just to increase engagement, and so we looked at students who maybe just attendance was a concern, maybe just socially weren't connecting, and so what could we do to draw those kids in so we don't lose them in, in those early years? And so this is a program that we developed, and I'm gonna turn it over to these two to tell you what they did all through June.
Okay, hi, I'm Megan Horky, I'm a sixth grade math teacher at Patrick Henry Middle School, this will be my third year.
And I'm Kenzie Erickson, I teach sixth grade ELA at Patrick Henry, and this will also be my third year. So as Ms. Sharping said, we were awarded the opportunity to provide a variety of different opportunities for just a variety of different students. The reason why is we just wanted to build stronger connection to these students and like just build the lifelong engagement. So, some examples. Some examples that we focused on was navigating the city bus system. We had the opportunity to, for students to ride the bus free this summer with their school ID, and so we wanted to teach them how to do that in case they were not given the opportunity to learn otherwise. So we walked to the bus stop from Patrick Henry and then waited there for the bus to pick us up, it took us downtown. From there, we then walked around, did sculpture walk, we went out to eat, talked about how we tip, how we order, how your parents can do it for you the rest of your life, just all the things, the life skills. We also learned life skills like how to tie a tie. I know myself, I was never taught how to tie a tie. A lot of the boys in our group was like, wait, I have to do this when I'm older, and they just loved it. They were racing, it was just a really neat experience that they said, oh my gosh, I can't wait to go home and tell my dad how to do this and teach him. So it was just fun to see them outside of the comfort zone of what we see at normal day-to-day school.
We were also able to go to Stensland Dairy Farm, we had a lot of kids that were like, ew, I don't want to go to a farm, and then they ended up loving it. Kayaking too, a few of our girls were really hesitant throughout the year to do anything, and at the end of kayaking, they were like, I love this so much, this was the most fun thing ever, I want to go back every day. Archery at the outdoor campus too, we had a student who had never done it before, and he was just a superstar. So he was like, I can't wait to go home and tell my parents about how good I am. He was like, I just want to keep doing this forever.
A couple other things, we were able to go to City Hall, and while we were at City Hall, we met the mayor, and we met the chief and assistant chief of police, we also met with the fire chief. And so through those different experiences and conversations and tour of City Hall, they were able to build those connections with the leaders of our community and see how different experiences growing up can maybe provide different opportunities for them that they might not see for themselves right now. And then we have a couple student interviews, just talking about what they took away from the program, what they highlighted, recommendations for changes they would like us to make, and so we'll show those.
My favorite thing about Summer Academy, it's all the guns, Stensland's family farm, and seeing all the cows eating like their ice cream, seeing how it's made and stuff. My favorite thing about Summer Academy. My favorite thing about Summer Academy, it's all the guns, Stensland's family farm, and seeing all the cows eating like their ice cream, seeing how it's made and stuff.
Yeah, they really love tasting the ice. For some reason.
Wouldn't.
I know.
My favorite thing was archery and shooting the arrows.
Why did you like that?
Because I could shoot stuff, like the deerlope, and the bear, the skunk, and the, yeah, that's it. My favorite.
That was our little archery superstar, who, he wants to start an archery club at Patrick in this, this coming school year, so we'll see.
He had never done it before, so he tapped into a new skill.
My favorite thing to do was the Stensland Farm Strip so far, because we get to see like animals and like what they use to make their, your products. What do we change, what should you change for next session? Probably like offer in the summer, it's like, if your summer's like pretty bland, you can, this might be like a highlight of your summer. And would you recommend this program to your friends? Yeah. Has this program changed your view of school? Yeah, because if you like, if you work hard, you can sometimes get like really good things out of it.
So that was from the students, and some of those students, it was just really cool to see because they are not real connected.
Pretty bland, you can, this might be like a highlight of your summer.
So we do hope to continue to offer the Summer Academy just different experiences that they don't normally get through the school year, and to just build those strong connections. Any questions?
I, I love hearing about, I'm the Summer Academy, that sounds fantastic, I have a feeling your numbers might rise, or is it just based off of teacher input, like invitation only?
We started this year with invitation only, and honestly, we weren't really sure if anybody would fight as soon as they heard summer school. They had a different idea what it was, but I do think the word will kind of get out, that it was more than just academics.
Yeah. Well, and I mean, as you know, my oldest went to Patrick, and multi-generational there too, so you definitely see those connections as you walk the halls, and teachers that have been there for a long time are obviously very dedicated to, to being at Patrick and staying at Patrick, and the culture that has been built in that you've fostered since you've become principal there is just apparent and very clear. So loved hearing about it, and have any other questions, any other comments?
I would just say, I think one of the most underutilized things in education today is in, I, for some reason, maybe financial, whatever, maybe people don't do the work, but field tips are great. I used to take my kids, we'd go to breakfast, we've got a half a day, I'd take all my classes at once, and we'd go to the federal courthouse, usually when someone, the citizen put me sworn in, and, and they're just great experiences. But, you know, we'd go to the county courthouse, here's how you register to vote, here's where taxes are, or you want to look up your house and see what it's worth, I mean, we had a lot of fun. And we'd usually go to the city also, sometimes, and we'd kind of rotate them, but I think those kind of experiences are good for kids.
Sometimes they don't have the access or means to do that.
Yeah, and, yeah, and who's gonna take a kid down to the courthouse and say, hey, three years from now, this is where you register to vote?
Stand in line with me while I come.
But I think it's important that they understand, government's a service, it's a service for them.
It's truly hard to replace experiential learning, and certainly technology has helped to, you know, make that leap, but it still, there's nothing that replaces just being there and physically seeing that, and that relationship between the teacher and the student is irreplaceable. And so I hear a lot of that is what happened, you had a smaller group and you were able to do that experiential learning as well as establish that relationship.
Yeah, it was really just special for them to be able to build those connections with outside community members too. A lot of them come from a variety of backgrounds, so be able, for them to be able to build that relationship with the mayor, the police chief, the fire chief, just hearing those different experiences was really something really cool.
And they were able to ask them a bunch of questions too, so we just had like the police chief answering all these questions, the kids were like, I didn't know I could ask a police officer this. Like, yeah, go ahead.
I think that's one of the things that we forget in Sioux Falls, is what a great city this is, and having talked to the mayor and having talked to the, they're like, they're normal people, and they are excited to talk to adults, and they're excited to talk to kids, and so not every city can say that. And so I think it's an awesome opportunity that these kids were introduced to those people and maybe have a different perception of who they, who those lead officials are now after having those conversations, and there's so many free things in Sioux Falls, and so who knows, maybe they might end up back at the outdoor campus doing a different activity on a free weekend that they didn't even know about in the past. And so, yeah, I love, love the idea, and it'd be great if other schools maybe happy to. Were these just sixth graders, were they just seventh, it was anybody?
It was only students that are going to be seventh or eighth, just because we don't know our new kids coming in yet, so it was students that we had already had in the building.
And then it was in June, but like how, like were they there every day, part of the day, all the day, like what did you?
We had two, yes, two, two-week sessions.
Okay.
So that first session was there Monday through Thursday, 9:30 to 12:30. So then it was, they got to sleep in a little bit.
Sure.
And then it wasn't too long where they were sick of us, yeah. And we served a lunch.
Nice. Very good. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on, we've got some new conflicts of interest, can I motion, get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those are approved. Move on to the approval of the consent agenda.
Oh, we need to do the individual board members abstain.
Oh, we do have to do it individually, sorry. The board members?
Yep.
Okay. And then we abstain if it's us?
Yes.
Okay. All right, sorry, so we'll go back to 11B, conflicts of interest from Mark Murren, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion passes with one abstention from board member Murren. All right, on to Carly Ryder, conflict of interest, can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion passes with one abstention from board member Ryder. And last but not least, conflict of interest for board member Sarah Buss.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion passes with one abstention from myself. All right, now moving on to the approval of the consent agenda, can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Oppose, same sign. That motion is approved. Moving on to the reports of the superintendent.
Yep, we have two reports Dr. Zeke is going to give. The first one is just a brief update on the annual approval of school improvement plans. And second is another annual application for the federal consolidated application that goes in for the dollars that we received to fund a variety of programs. So head on those. And then we will have Mr. Veek come up and talk about the final version of the fiscal year 23 budget.
Good evening, board. Great work thus far, President and Vice President. We, like Dr. Stavum said, I have two reports to give today. And that is the school improvement planning process, and that will be brief. And then we'll get on to the federal consolidated application reports. To begin, annually, each school works really hard throughout the school year and starting probably in March to prepare for the new school year to create a new school improvement plan for that new school year. And these plans will be posted on their individual websites within the Sioux Falls and through their link in the Sioux Falls School District website. The plans are a requirement for accreditation and for Title I accountability. And last year, they changed up a bit and follow the Plan Do Study Act structure. And that allows buildings to really work through the school year to take maybe minor looks at their school improvement plan as they're analyzing what they had planned, what they had done. Then they study and then they react on that. And then they take the deeper dive, which will be coming on the website soon. Plans, like I said, are considered working documents. They meet the goals set forth by the South Dakota DOE and are district priorities, most specifically academic success, well-being and community engagement. The impact of the school improvement plans will be noted in the annual achievement update to the board in the fall. That was brief. Now I'll just move right on to the federal consolidated application report and allow time for questions at the end. As part of the Every Student Succeeds Act, otherwise known as ESSA, the South Dakota Department of Education resquires schools to share how they're going to spend the funds that are given by the federal government to the, to the state and then carried through down to the local education agency, the Sioux Falls School District. Noted that these funds are supplemental to our general education funds and include Title I, II, III, and IV. I've given you a visual of our funding from 2021, 21, 22, and then for this coming school year, 22, 23. And the numbers fluctuate up and down a bit. You can see that Title I Part A and Part C are flat. Title I Part D is a bit down. And Title II, if you look at 2021, went up to 2020, 21, 22, but then now back down again to the funding level that was two years ago, which if I zip down to Title IV, is the exact opposite. It was up, then it went down, then went back up again. I could probably go through the explanation of why that is, but I won't. Probably because it's on my list of learning, since this is my second year in the job. But those are the funds that we'll receive for this coming school year. And many of the Title, the Title I Part A funding recipients are the 10 elementary schools. And they are title schools. The Elementary Immersion Center, Hawthorne, Terry Redland Lowell, Laura B. Anderson, Bridges at Horace Mann, Garfield, Hayward, Cleveland, and Annie Sullivan. The funding requests for these 10 schools that support them and their students are class size reduction teachers. This takes our average class size enrollment from 24.3 down to 18 per classroom. We fund instructional coaches, SIPs reading teachers at the first grade level, success coordinators and social workers, English learner teachers, which I understand are now becoming called multilingual teachers. So you'll have a new acronym, ML, that you'll probably be hearing in the coming years. Tier two teachers and behavior facilitators, some professional development, family involvement activities like parent nights or muffins with moms, donuts with dads, homeless liaisons and transportation, and then several preschool slots to help our and support our youngest learners. Moving on to Title I Part C, those funding requests include school home liaisons. And Title I Part C is focused on migrant education. Those students whose family work migratory jobs and have been identified in the Sioux Falls School District. We also have additional preschool spots for them. We have tuition for high school, summer school qualifying students. So it's those migrant students who may want to take a course at CTE in the summer so that they could get some more credits. Primarily that's a speech class that they take. Professional development for migrant teachers specifically. And then we fund interpreters to help communicate with the families. In Title I Part D, we're looking at those neglected and delinquent students. We fund a reading teacher at Summit Oaks, the residential program. We have a halftime math teacher at JDC, the Juvenile Detention Center in Minnehaha County. And that person is also our halftime transition coordinator that helps with all of the programs as students move back and forth between the school setting and the agencies. And we have a halftime dropout and prevention success coordinator. And that's funded at one of our high schools. And I remember how I said the funding had bounced up and down. It used to be three. So we've had to shift some of that funding to fund two of those success coordinators from Title I Part A. And then ESER picks up the fourth, since we now have a fourth high school. And they help to coordinate back and forth as students move between the Joe Foss program or JDC or Summit Oaks or other programs in the community. Title II Part A is all about professional learning. We're looking at elementary instructional coaches that embedded themselves in the buildings, middle school and high school Spanish immersion coaches funded out of Title II A, Boys Town Well-Managed Training that we have in the summertime for teachers that helps with students who are struggling behaviorally. The Teacher Pathway Program, which is a fantastic program to get those kids who may have an interest in teaching to get, dip their toe in the water and try it out. Professional development opportunities, like I said. And many of the non-title buildings fund their professional development through Title II A. And then we have equitable services for private school students, and that's based upon their enrollment per law. Title III supports our English learners, or as I might say, multilingual learners. I'll have to get used to that. I apologize in advance. They fund educate, this funds education assistance at middle school and high school, the EL or ML instructional coach, sheltered instruction observation protocol. That's just a long way of saying research-based best practice strategies for helping multilingual learners. We have tuition and supplies for our ENL endorsement coursework for staff who want to go after that degree. Equitable services, again, for private schools. And that's based upon the number of identified English learners that they, or multilingual learners that they have in their classrooms. And we have reading support subscriptions and K-12 summer instruction for EL students. In Title IV, Title IV really has three buckets or three areas. They are improving the conditions for learning, ensuring a well-rounded education, and the enhancement, enhancing the use of technology. I'll start with the technology. We didn't fund anything this year out of Title IV because that all came out of ESER. So we thought this was a year that we could fund that with ESER. And going back to improving conditions for learning, we have, George McGovern has an Eagle Vision program, which really targets students who have had challenges in the regular education classroom and have struggled in that area, but still they can remain in the building and get that support. Axtel Park has a Joe Foss program, and we fund a halftime counselor and middle school success coordinators in Whittier and McGovern. And then finally, to ensure a well-rounded education, we have the one and a half SIPs instructional coaches. And we have AP exams for students who would otherwise be unable to, to afford the fees that go along with the AP exams. And then again, equitable services for Title IV based upon total enrollment. The recommendation is to acknowledge the school improvement planning and federal consolidated application reports. I stand by for questions.
Any questions for Dr. Zeke?
If anybody wants to call in for questions.
Now.
Mark's making sure he doesn't have a question.
Yeah. And once a reminder, the school improvement plans, I think it's awesome that we have them on the website. So parents and community members, if they have curiosity about their individual schools, they can go on there and look at those and compare and so forth and that. And with the consolidated reports, as you say, it is always, every year, it's, you know, maybe basically Rubik's Cube of figuring out which one we're going to get funding in and what. And because we basically have the same amount of students and so forth that still have the same needs. So it's like, which funding source will we be able to serve those needs in the best way? So thank you for working with your team to figure that out. It's a complex system. Yeah. Right, no other questions. We'll take the two reports separately. So can I get a motion to approve the report on the school improvement plans?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I'm excited this is the new format online.
Yeah, and I'd like to compliment Dr. Zeke. He's done a lot of work with our building principals, moving to that just a little bit different format and matches up nicely with how we look at our district priorities. And it just keeps, I think it's much more fluid and living. And so principals and their staff have done a very nice job with that as well.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion passes. And can I get a motion to approve the federal consolidated application report?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Any further comments? Again, just very complex system. I, too, work in federal government type of things. So I know the rules and regulations you have to follow. So appreciate your work and the team's work on keeping all of that straight. I know it's not easy. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. And that report, that motion passes. And the last is the adoption of the fiscal year 23 budget and certification of levies to the county auditors. Mr. Veek?
Thank you. So we began your process back in November of 2021 when you adopted the guidelines and timelines for the budget process. In December through February, 19 subcommittees met and went through numerous, I think it's like 90 now, but different budgets and prepared those, which were brought to a budget review committee in March, which included two board members and about 20 members that were also on those committees that prepared those budgets. After that, a recommendation was made and it was presented to the full board at a work session on March 30th. And then again, on April 6th. And after questions were answered and adjustments were made, the board conducted a public hearing and approved the tentative budget, a tentative budget at its April 11th meeting. Since that time, there's been a few changes. We, basically all involving the admin legal services budget. We combined the, all the safety into that budget. We moved the risk manager in there. That's a part-time position, kind of develops all the protocols and whatnot. Added a security coordinator, a day-to-day person who will work with the schools and the police force and whatnot on a day-to-day basis, who will actually implement those plans. And then we just made an adjustment to, the teammate staff person was shown as a, was an employment contract, which is where they should have been. So overall, the, the general fund budget changed by increasing cash to 200, by $200,000. So what you have here. So this is the budget rolled up all into one page. And we're going to ask you to adopt the FY23 budget for the Sioux Falls School District and certify the levies to the Minnehaha and Lincoln County auditors. Those levies, if I recall right, I think are down about 13 cents from last year, where we were last year. So I'd ask you to make that motion. I'd stand by for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Veek? And so for the general public, the 13 cents per thousand.
Yeah.
That's correct. Down. So less. All right, seeing none. And we've, obviously, we have discussed this over several meetings. And so our budget is not news to us. This is just the final approval. So I will take a motion to approve the adoption of the FY23 budget and certification of levies to the county auditors.
So moved.
Second.
Any further comments? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion passes. We're now on to item 14, review revise of the Sioux Falls School District policies and regulations.
Thanks. I have five policies for your consideration tonight. These five policies have been reviewed by the Policy Review Committee, and we're bringing them forward to you tonight. Of the five, we are recommending no changes to two of them. Of the remaining three, two of them are some personnel policies. That's GA and GBG. And in those policies, we're updating some language to reflect the current HR recruitment and retention goals. So that's just some updates to language in there. And then finally, the last policy is in our health services section. And that's policy JLCAA, and it's accompanying regulation. And we're making some changes here to clarify what the goals of our physician prescribed services are and then to clarify the importance of the need to dialogue with the physicians that are ordering those services in the schools. With that, I'd ask that you approve the review revision of these policies and any accompanying regulations.
Any questions? Can I get a motion to approve the review revision of the regulations and policies that we mentioned?
So moved.
Second.
Any other comments? Seeing none. We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion passes. Anything else for the good of the order? Okay. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.